My mic is on. It seems like the school year has just started, but it's that time of year again where we are talking about the Fall Musical, so I want to welcome our guests. And is it Dave, are you introducing or is the...
I certainly have.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is going to be a big one. Footloose, I think we're going to draw a great crowd, so it's always great to get a little introduction here. And Kerry Heisler, our choir director and members of the cast, to show us a little bit about what we all have in store.
I'm Jamie Pelbicki. I'm head directing the musical this year. The last two years, I've been helping as assistant director, musical director, since my first time, taking the reins, taking the lead with the help of the wonderful Mrs. Kerry Heisler, music directing for this one. So we're hard at work with Footloose. We've been rehearsing since September, basically the second week. And we're going to open November 8th through the 17th, so we can perform this Friday, Saturday, Sunday for both weekends. We have about 55 students in the cast and another 30 or so in the crew and pit orchestra, so lots of students involved in bringing the show together, lots of hard work behind the scenes. We brought a couple of students to sing a little bit of what's going on in the musical, but it's just been a pleasure to get to take the lead on this one. It's a great story. The nostalgia factor is strong, right? For a lot of folks. Just some great music and a lot of choreography, which is a little bit different than the last two shows that we've had, so just a lot of dancing, a lot of movement, and it's been great. So I will let the students take it from here.
Hi, my name is Silas Heisler. I'm a senior and I play Ren in the musical. I'll be singing a little bit of "I Can't Stand Still." Pretty self-explanatory. I never walk when I can run. I don't believe I ever could. People try to slow me down, saying, "Boy, you really should kick back and chill," but I can't stand still. I called the doctor, he said, "Son, I cannot offer you a pill." So I never found relief. Now I've got to move until I've had my fill. I can't stand still. Back where I come from, life's never humdrum. I wish I could take you there. Whoa. We had the world at our feet. Life was sweet, ain't no doubt. Grab a seat, check it out. I'm trying hard to tone it down, gotta watch my Ps and Qs. Maybe look before I leap, and then I think, "Hey, what's the use? Ain't done it yet." I can't forget how it feels when you dance till you drop, so don't even start to suggest that I stop. I never will, 'cause I can't stand still.
Hi, my name is Lauren Cromery. I am a senior at Hudson High School, and I am playing the role of Rusty. Today I'll be singing part of "Let's Hear It For The Boy." And Rusty's boyfriend Willard is just trying to learn how to dance during this song. [laughing]
My baby, he don't talk sweet. He ain't got much to say. But he loves me, loves me, loves me. I know that he loves me anyway. And maybe he don't dress fine, but I don't really mind. 'Cause every time he pulls me near, I just wanna cheer. Let's hear it for the boy! Let's give the boy a hand. Let's hear it for my baby! You know you gotta understand. Whoa, maybe he's no Romeo, but he's my loving one-man show. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Let's hear it for the boy! Whoa, yeah! My baby may not be rich, he's watching every dime. But he loves me, loves me, loves me. We always have a real good time. And maybe he sings off-key, but that's alright by me. Yeah, yeah. 'Cause what he does, he does so well, makes me wanna yell. Let's hear it for the boy! Let's give the boy a hand. Let's hear it for my baby! You know you gotta understand. Whoa, maybe he's no Romeo, but he's my loving one-man show. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Let's hear it for the boy!
Jim, can you go check on him and see if he's alive?
All right. Great job. Anything else more you want to say other than I was trying to get on here and get my tickets before they're sold out?
Yep, so you can find tickets at the district homepage. Nice big banner at the top. So, yeah. Hudson Raider Center.
Hope to see you all there.
Yeah, it's gonna be a great show.
Thank you.
Great job.
Always enjoy them coming in, and they do such a wonderful job. So I'm sure they put a lot of work, time, and effort into it. Hopefully, the public will get out there and buy tickets. So that was the second and third weekends in November, November 8th to the 17th. Next up, we have some Wasbe recognition. I guess we have the regional meeting coming up, but prior to that, we would like to recognize Bob and Megan for advancing to next level recognition. Nick?
Yeah, I think, let's see if I got this on. Okay. I think Bob is on level like 76, and no. Actually, you're going to be getting certificates at the Wasbe Regional that is coming up, I believe, next Wednesday. We have, I think, five board members attending that, myself and Menominee. But this recognition is for training, so the more trainings that you attend as board members, they kind of keep track of that, and you meet the different levels. And so it was obviously just goes to show the amount of time outside even board meetings that board members are putting in. So congratulations to both of you on that.
Yes. Good job. Give them a hand. And people, I'm sure some folks know that this job does require more than just attending meetings and the preparation for those meetings, but getting the training, I think, has allowed us to get a much better understanding of the job. It's not like that whole first year is a real learning curve. I'm sure, Megan, you're our newest member, and you can attest to that. And I've been on, this is my 12th year, and I'm still not to level five yet, so it requires a lot of time. They have now webinars. They didn't have those when I first started 12 years ago, but a lot of opportunity to just learn more in depth. And I think we should get credit for just all the mailings we get too, but from Wasbe. And anyway, so good job, Bob and Megan. Now we have time in the meeting where we'd have citizens request to speak. Do we have anyone who asked? All right. Seeing none, and I don't have to read that disclaimer that we usually do, and sometimes I forget, but all right, we'll just go into reports and turn it over to Dave first.
All right. Thank you very much, Jamie. So we're excited tonight to share with you an update on CKLA, which is our elementary literacy curricular resource. Right now, we're implementing it grades three, five. We'll be implementing K2 next year. So CKLA, the C and the K stands for Core Knowledge. Core Knowledge is based on the concept that in order to read effectively, we need to have a basic understanding of the material we read. So if we think about as adults, we read more fluently, we comprehend more deeply if we have some knowledge of the subject matter that we're reading about. Same goes for kids, certainly. So CKLA helps build a core base of knowledge while teaching kids to read, and something that's very aligned to the science of reading. As you know, last year, we saw really great results with our K2 learners in reading, as evidenced by our FastBridge results, best we've ever seen. And that is over the top of the fact that we've seen relatively flat results throughout our English growth. We're really working hard to improve those results. We're very confident that our CKLA implementation will help us in that effort. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Laura Minarchek, who's our Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, and Jenna Wyland, Elementary Literacy Specialist.
Hi, everybody.
Is it up?
Oh, now it's on. All right, so as Dave said, CKLA stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts. And as you can see, CKLA is built on the science of how kids learn to read. There are two basic components. Skill readers have developed mastery over word recognition and language comprehension. And CKLA works explicitly to build both of these components over time. We'll go into more detail later on, but one important thing to notice about this slide is the nature of the equation. It's a multiplication equation, so if either of these two components is zero or significantly lacking, the other one has a very, very difficult time compensating, and it's very difficult to become a skilled reader. This slide breaks apart both sides of the simple view of reading. The orange colors represent language comprehension, while the blue colors account for word recognition. In earlier grades, these strands are taught more in isolation from one another, but as we get into the upper grades and kids develop more fluency, the strands are taught together in comprehensive integrated skill strands.
As Laura stated, CKLA is a comprehensive curriculum. What this means is it encompasses all literacy aspects in the day of teaching. Skills cohesively align and are integrated within each lesson. For example, you will find students in our classroom currently participating in explicit grammar, morphology, and vocabulary lessons, while also reading connected texts and writing about the text. Through these daily practices and reinforcements, our skills for our students are solidified, and they become more authentic and independent. Student readers are another component of the CKLA resource. For each unit, every student will have their own individual reader. These mini-books are grade-level texts filled with content-related and knowledge-building topics connected to the unit as a whole. Between the covers, you will find a variety of stories, both a mix of contemporary and classic literature. The literature always has connections to the learning goals of the unit, and these texts have multiple instructional uses. For example, you might see a teacher reading one aloud to her class, or you could see students partner-reading them, or even independently or silently reading them. Accessibility to the content and knowledge is key, which is why it's beneficial that all students are able to access these readers, both in print and digitally as e-readers. Using CKLA as a core instructional tool is important to help students meet grade-level standards and work with these grade-level standards. However, we are also aware the needs of our classrooms can vary, both with having students that may need additional support and practice to those that need enrichment and extension opportunities. This is where our personalized learning tool of Boost comes into play. Boost is a digital practice program that is student-driven. It's based on pre-assessments and ongoing formative assessments. That data then is collected and places students on a predetermined, personalized, adaptive pathway. Students typically access Boost during their independent work time, which allows them to have purposeful, independent, content-aligned work. And the skills they're working on focus on foundational reading skills, like blending words or spelling, to the higher-level skills like understanding morphology or the word parts in larger words. There is even some work in understanding embedded vocabulary and content.
So knowledge is sequenced to provide deep understanding over time. When students have background knowledge, they're able to engage with, comprehend, and contribute to deep conversations about complex texts and topics. You can see that by following the science strand, and then on the next slide, they get to chemical matter at the end of fifth grade, which may seem advanced for a fifth grader. However, they have been gaining incremental knowledge each year, starting from kindergarten when they first learned how to take care of the earth. You may be wondering about our current fifth graders who are just starting CKLA this year. At the beginning of every unit, the program outlines specific content knowledge that is crucial for their learning during that unit, so teachers are able to spend a little bit of time filling in some of those gaps that they may have missed. We are, however, very excited to see how students respond to this program over time. This slide highlights the research coming from CKLA implementation. I invite you to scan the QR code on the top for a more comprehensive look at the data if you're interested. One thing that we'd like to highlight on this slide is that CKLA has positive outcomes for all students, but it also has amazing research indicating it closes the gaps for students coming from low-income families. So we're super excited to see how that comes to fruition.
So Laura and I could talk all day about CKLA and all the great things we're seeing in the classroom, but we know from you guys, we want to see that from the kids. We heard it. So...
They use a technique for cropping known as slash and burn. Slash and burn is where they cut down trees in an area, and then they burn the area, and then the ashes leave nutrients in the soil, just like fertilizer. Like, I didn't know the word aquatic, but it means like ocean and plants in the water. And I didn't know what vertebrates or invertebrates were in Ammoors or before the lesson.
In CKLA, I'm writing a personal narrative about getting my dog. My writing has a topic, sentence, details, and ends with a conclusion. I really like all the writing we do in CKLA.
In CKLA, I learned that fish are cold-blooded.
My favorite thing about CKLA is the readers, because they have a lot of descriptive words, and when I'm reading them, they make me think like I'm watching a movie.
I never thought it would happen to me. Before a polio vaccine was developed, I knew that polio killed or crippled thousands of people.
I like the readers because it has very interesting stories, and I learned about somebody getting polio and their journey through it.
One of the things I like about Boost is, or CKLA is Boost, and we get to put together a bunch of puzzles, and we get to learn about grammar, and we get to play a bunch of fun games to unlock different animals, and that builds a curioso. And curiosos are what helps your brain grow stronger.
So we hope you've learned a little bit about CKLA, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Megan.
So I have a fourth grader, so I've seen this in action, and she just finished up or is working on the Middle Ages unit, which has been fun to see. And there's spelling the vocabulary words, so she's studying for the spelling test, which I was kind of excited that there's a spelling test, because I remember that. And she's begging to play Boost at home at night. She's like, "Please, can I just play Boost for a little bit?" instead of asking to watch TV. So far, it's been really awesome.
That's awesome.
Molly?
Hey, thank you. I love this. It just reminds me, or makes me think, it's like an IEP in action for each kid, you know? Like, this is where you're at, and it's ability to like tailor it directly to where they are and where you want them to go. One thing I was curious about, so if the kids are learning about chemicals or something like that, do they all start off with the same piece of information and read through it, and then from there, it kind of is tailored to what they need to work on? Is that kind of how it works? Is that accurate to ask?
Yeah, so the content, like for example, chemical matter, that's all at grade level, so all students are exposed to that at that grade-level standard. Now, all teachers have access in their manuals of ways they can support students that maybe need more background information, or more hands-on specific practices, or ways to extend or enrich. Boost specifically, which is the real adaptive platform, that is more focused on the core ideas of vocabulary, phonics, encoding, things like that. So that's more where that differentiation falls.
Okay, that makes sense, to see where the Boost program and the teacher kind of interact. And I love it that that young lady said she liked learning about grammar. I mean, holy cow, she could probably teach us some stuff. I don't remember anything. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Well, thank you for your report, and it sounds like it's making great progress, so we got firsthand testimonials from a parent here, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Nick is going to give us a construction update. I don't know if you're going to show us the video as well, or...
Yeah, I can pull it up there, Tim. So, yeah, that's just kind of the flyover. This was...
There wasn't no sound with this, right? Because when I played it, I did.
No, there's no dramatic music. If you'd like me to hum, I could do something like that. No, and this is actually, this is already an outdated shot, because I was just checking the back cameras just now. The far east wall, so the back of the gym by the two trailers there, is now done. And they have put underground plumbing through the media center to connect under the building. That's all done. They've already started demoing the inside of the building, so they are moving along quite quickly. The goal is, they should have, they're going to be starting to put a roof on it or steel on it, second week, I think, in November. So it is going to move, it's going to move pretty quick now that we got everybody going and started. You can see it's all fenced off, but it's definitely a busy site. Again, this is from October 3rd, so almost, you know, two weeks ago. And right now, it would look quite a bit different than that if we did another one. So we're gonna, this is something that Mark and Johnson does for us at no additional cost or anything like that. We're going to have this done, I think, instead of once a month, we're going to try to have them do it about every two weeks, so we can do some time-lapse stuff as well. As we continue to kind of move through the other projects, so we're on schedule, we're back on schedule with this project. The other two projects, North EP Rock and the middle school. EP Rock will be starting December 9th and be going full bore at that point. The middle school will be starting on December 2nd and be going that way. The one thing you will see, I think, is early, is what, this week, Bonnie, they're doing some utility work at EP Rock, and the entries, and trees. Yeah, sorry, not entries, but yes, they're going to be pulling down trees. We have, we have a variety of trees that have to come down that are in the wrong spot, and then we have trees that didn't have to come down, but they're dead because they're ash trees. And so while they're there, taking down some of the original trees, there's about 11 dead ash trees that have to come down. So we are having them do that while they're there and getting that stuff done. But they're also removing some of the fencing, I think, on the north side of the entry drive there to get ready to run new waterline along the north side of the building, EP Rock. The middle school really doesn't have much going on on the outside. Probably won't see anything from the outside for, until next summer, when they do some things with the district office entry and stuff like that. Questions about construction and where we're at?
Bob?
With North Hudson, with the existing media center, that doesn't change until, that stays in use until summer?
Yeah, probably end of spring is when that'll, it's when the new media center's open, and we have to get occupancy, and then we'll start shifting things down in the new media center before we close the existing. So...
Yep. Molly?
Thank you. Is there, I haven't looked at the Hudson Raider website. Is this on the website at all? And can we share it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, this is on, this is on the website, so if you go right, where was it at? Oh, is it under, is it under community? I thought this was on the website.
Sorry, sorry to put you in the spot.
I'll find it. But I know we had it on the website, so I'll make sure that we, it's easier to, if you click, facility maintenance projects and the updates, and we'll add this most recent update and the projects, so.
And one more thing.
Yeah.
The video's not there yet.
We'll get the video linked.
One more thing, Nick, we had talked about having student involvement with the project. Is that moving forward?
Still working. Right now, it's been just getting the project off the ground, but yeah, we will talk with Mark and Johnson, especially as the middle school comes online, the two other projects come online, there'll be more opportunities for student involvement as far as internships and things along those lines. Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions regarding construction? But we'll probably get a monthly report here as...
And actually, at the work session coming up, Mark and Johnson will be at the work session coming up. They'll be going through kind of their update, more in-depth update for you guys to be able to ask more detailed questions. I'm going to try to schedule here in the next week or so, if board members want to do kind of a walk, walk and talk on-site, you know, I will try to get that scheduled for late afternoon if that works best. Try to do it before they shut everything down and lock everything up, so.
Yep.
All right.
Just let us know when that can be arranged.
Okay.
All right. Next up, under reports, is referendum update.
Yeah, apparently, we're having a referendum on November 5th. No. Referendum update, we've had different community meetings. I would say our more successful meetings are when we tag on to an existing meeting. I think one of our best attended was the folks that stayed after our senior tech club. We had probably about 50 folks involved with that meeting, and they had good questions as we went through it. I had an opportunity to set up shop at the Y. I had about 20-some people come through there to stop and talk and to go over our referendum. We've had, I've talked with the Ministerial Association, met with them. We're setting up a meeting with Wintergreen, our retirement village. We've done a Rotary presentation, so just done a variety of different ones that are coming up. Like to lead off with our video a lot of times, because it is the quickest way to get a lot of information out there about the situation we're in. But really, the bottom line comes to, just for those people that are watching, is we're looking at a $5 million reoccurring operational referendum. It's about four cents on the meal rate, so on a half a million-dollar house, it's about 20 bucks. On a $250,000 house, as we've talked about at the board meeting, it's about $10, and that's not per month or per quarter, that's annual what the cost is. And so really, you know, people have asked, okay, what has been different about this referendum? You asked a year and a half ago, people said, "No, what have you done differently?" You know, we surveyed the community after that referendum, and the feedback we got was, "You need to make cuts before you ask us for more money. You need to work on getting rid of some of your facilities, and you need to try to par it down a little bit." And so since then, we've cut almost $2 million in staffing over the last year and a half, trying to reduce some things as we've had some decline in enrollment. We've also listed the district office for sale. We've had a couple of different interested parties, but nothing is totally a formal offer yet. And then the UU property, we do have an offer on that and a contract on that, and we're just hopefully in the final stages of being able to execute that contract. There were some contingencies, as you guys are aware, as we went through that. So trying to live up to what they asked us to do after the last referendum, I think we're doing that, trying to have minimal impact on the taxpayers as we do this. But it's, you know, just want to remind people, November 5th, to get out and vote. Regardless of how you vote, we just want people to get out and exercise the right to vote, so.
If you could, for the folks on the reoccurring revenue cap increase, basically, we do have a history of that going back, was it 1999 or 2001? It was right around there, that we had that. And just because we seek the authority to raise the cap, that doesn't necessarily mean it always gets assessed.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that you always use it. It just gives you the permission to use it if you'd like to use it. The last time we went for an operational referendum was 2001. Last time we passed one, 2001, we didn't actually start utilizing that full levy until 2022. And so there's 21 years of not needing to use it, but it was there. And so there's 21 years of not needing to use it, but it was there in case you needed it. I'd like to say that you're going to have the same luxury with this one, I don't think that's going to be quite the case, just because of the position we're in, because of the state funding. But, and people often ask why reoccurring versus non-reoccurring. You know, we tend to look at non-reoccurring referendums for projects or one-time expenditures or projects that we would do over multiple years. We're really talking about needing to supplement our budget with our ongoing expenses, and so that's why that reoccurring is, because these expenses are not going to go away for us. And so really need to look at that. We're not unique. We will be one of 149 school districts this year alone in the state of Wisconsin have gone for operational referendum out of 421. So over 85% of the school districts in the state currently operate using an operational referendum, just because of the inability for state aid to keep pace.
And, you know, the board has, had been looking at this since the last referendum that was at 8 million had failed. The feeling for not going for 8 million again, or, you know, there are certain assumptions we're basing this on, one of which is, you know, a continued loss of enrollment?
Yeah, we are basing this on, you know, continued loss of enrollment, we have some enrollment stuff that, coming up on the agenda, but we anticipate that our enrollment's going to continue to kind of drop over the next four or five years, not as drastically as it has over the last three or four years, but, and that has to do with just the smaller class sizes coming in in kindergarten. So bringing in kindergarten classes of 300, graduating seniors, classes of 450, 460, you know, creates quite a difference between those two, and so that is definitely a challenge for us as we move forward.
All right. Lynn, did you have a question on the referendum part?
I do. Dr. Olick, can you speak to our retention rate? I know it's not called, I think it's capture rate.
Capture rate.
Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, our capture rate, a lot of times people will say, well, it's because everybody's choosing other options other than Hudson schools. And our capture rate, we looked at this about a year ago, haven't run a new set of numbers in the last year, but our capture rate has been running, I think, right around 86, 87%. We looked at it back in 2014, at the height of the largest our district had been, and we're running about 86, 87%. So what that means is, we are required to track every child that's school age that lives within our attendance boundary, whether they go to the Hudson School District, or they go to private school, Trinity St. Pat's, or they're homeschooled, or they open enroll to another school district, or even students that live in Hudson and go to a school in Minnesota. And so by tracking those, we are required to know where those kids are as far as compulsory tenants, so we know exactly how many school-age children live within our boundaries and how many of them are attending Hudson. We are, we just have fewer school-age kids living in our boundaries. And it's a combination of things. I mean, obviously, it's expensive to live here, but it's also, birth rates are down, there was an article in the Wall Street Journal today, talking about several countries that are having this issue, they've never recovered since 2008, since the Great Recession. It's an issue that the United States has had, but it's not unique to the United States. It definitely is hitting Wisconsin. Wisconsin's becoming a very aging state, as we've listened and talked to demographers. But then the things that kind of compound it for us is the cost of living here in the Hudson School District is a real challenge.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Rob?
So Nick, would you say our capture rate is typical, or average, or as far as other Wisconsin school districts?
You know, what I have to go back on is, yes, I think we have a very high capture rate, considering we have two parochial systems in our district. And I go back to, the district before I got here used a demographer, I think her name was Hazel Reinhardt. And she was saying that, you know, anything over 80% is pretty phenomenal, and we're sitting at about 86, 87%. And so we're sitting at a pretty high capture rate, and knowing that people have options, you know, they have the, and our community being as fluent as it is, that usually provides more options for people, whether it be open enrollment, whether it be private school and things like that. So yes, we have a, we have a very high capture rate.
And, you know, we hope that folks see that, you know, we have been trying to do those things that are within our control, like cut expenses where we can, reduce the district's footprint, but two things that we don't have a whole lot of control over, and that is folks having kids, birth rates and so forth. So, but the other thing we don't have control over as well is what's happening down in Madison with state aid, and I think it bears repeating to just a little bit, it's somewhat of a broken record, because we've seen this steady decline, you know, in the dozen years that I've been on the board, as far as how much the state helps. It's a very complicated formula, but for a property-rich district, Hudson, maybe, Nick, you can just elaborate on the decoupling too of the state aid with any kind of consumer price index or cost of living?
Yes, so, back in 2010, the legislature decoupled state aid from CPI, and if we would have just kept CPI increases, so just got just pure inflationary increases, nothing more, nothing less, we'd have about $2,200 more per pupil in the Hudson School District in our budget, which would equate to about $1.5 million larger budget. We're trying to make up about half of that with the operational referendum, and so, you know, that's been a really big challenge. The other thing with the funding formula, when it comes to property tax, is because we are such what's considered a property-rich school district, every time we have a lot of property value go up and we don't increase in students, the state says, oh, it looks like you guys are very wealthy, you don't need as much aid, put it on property tax owners. So just to give you some perspective, about 10 years ago, when I got here, we were running about 2/3 state aid, about 1/3 property tax, and right now, we're running about 1/3 state aid and about 2/3 property tax. So it's kind of juxtaposed as we work through it. Going back to Rob's question about the capture rate, I just pulled up the document, I guess I did update it this spring in '24. The total number of school-age children in our district, let's see here, pulling it up, is 49, 4,900 students in our district, or, sorry, total students in the boundary, 5,481. So 5,481. Back in 2014, we had 6,291. So we had almost 1,000 more school-age kids that lived in our district.
Is that inclusive of 4K?
So this is without 4K.
Okay.
And, because we took out 4K. And just to give you some perspective, people will say, well, is homeschool growing tremendously? Everybody wants to homeschool their kids. In 2014, there were 143 students that were homeschooled, we currently have 169 students that are homeschooled. So has there been some uptick? Yes, but a lot of that happened back when the pandemic, in 2020 and 2021, when the number jumped to 258, and now it's dropped back down into more of an average. So over the 11 years, we've averaged 160, about 160 homeschool students as you look at it. When we look at our enrollment, our Second Friday enrollment and January count, we've lost about, not including 4K, about 400 and, about 400, 500 students, right around there. Overall, our capture rate is 86.4%. In 2024, our average capture rate, the highest it's ever been is 89.6, and that was in 2020, and the lowest it's ever been is 86.2, which was in 2021, the height of the pandemic. So we're bouncing around right in there, our 11-year average is about 88%.
Yes.
I'd like to clarify that the earlier talk of $2 million in cuts to teacher positions and administrative, that was due to enrollment decreases, not for changes in student class size, or?
Yep, so we didn't adjust class size guidelines, we have, we've done some reductions in enrollment, we've also, we've cut administrative positions, we've cut clerical positions, we've cut custodial positions. You know, one of the things that we're starting to see in the last two years is the bubbles working its way, or lack thereof of bubbles, working its way into the high school. So in the last 10 years, we have cut 23 sections of elementary, so that's equivalent to almost basically a four-section elementary building. We've cut 11 FTEs at the middle school, teacher-wise, five at the high school, we've cut four administrative positions, we've got two secretary positions, and I'm not 100% sure how many custodians we've cut, but we've made cuts at a lot of different levels. And so it's not just teachers, or it's not just administrators, but we try to make adjustments. But one of the challenges that we run into is, you know, if our enrollment is linear, our cuts aren't, they're more stair-stepped. And, you know, the example I tend to use with people is, if we have four sections of 27 at Hudson Prairie in fourth grade last year, and this year, there's four sections of 25 at Hudson Prairie in fourth grade, we don't, we don't have anything we can cut, you know, we can't combine into three sections. However, $100,000 worth of revenue essentially walks out of that budget in that area in those four classrooms, not that we budget quite like that, but that's the equivalent of what it is. And so that's one of the, that's one of the challenges that we run into. So it's not just as easy as, well, can't you just cut your way out of this without having dramatic impacts on kids? Go ahead, Rob.
So, question for clarification. So we talk about cuts, but how many of those reductions were through attrition? Like?
Oh.
Yeah, I'm on.
Tim shut your mic down, I think.
So, yeah. So the cuts, how many of those, or how much of that was through attrition versus actually reduction?
I would say not all of them have been through attrition. We've had, we have had to let people know that, you know, we're having to use our reduction of force language. Some of the administrative positions have been through attrition, some of them have been, we're just letting you know that, you know, this position's going to be eliminated, so they've gone out and looked at other positions and gotten other jobs, and then we don't fill it. But, so I would not say 100% is attrition, but we try to use attrition whenever we can. It's just easier transition for our employees.
Mr. President?
Megan.
And if you talked about this while I stepped away, just, I'm very worried about what might need to be cut if the referendum doesn't pass, because it, there's no trimming around the edges with the budget projection, so, you know, what do you think that could look like?
Well, you know, we start to look at somewhere around 5 to 7 million dollar deficits over the next four to five years, and that's not cumulative, that starts to become an annual deficit. And so just to give you a little bit of perspective, if, an employee equivalent would be, you know, when we look at teaching staff, it's about $100,000 for every position we eliminate. But when we look at support staff, it's going to be less, administrative's going to be a little more, but if we just figure, you know, $100,000 on average, or maybe about $90,000 on average, if we had to cut $5 million, I mean, we're talking almost 60 positions to cut in the district. That's about, you know, almost 10% of our workforce. And people always say, well, why do you always talk about cutting people? Why don't you just, why don't you cut copies or supplies? Well, about 80 to 85% of our budget is people. It's, we're in the people business, what we do. And so then on top of that, about another 10% of our budget is fixed cost, it's turning the lights on, it's having heat, air conditioning, transportation, things along those lines. So really, when we talk about that discretionary amount of the budget, we're talking about about 5% of our budget that's really, that we're buying supplies out of. That's the curriculum, like the presentation you just heard about, our technology, all of these different components, fixing our buildings, stuff along those lines. And so, you know, I try to remind people, we cut over $900,000 this year. If we didn't make a single copy this year, we couldn't get $900,000 worth of savings. So having a school district that doesn't have anything printed for kids is probably not a great district you want to be in, so we don't have much of a choice. So could some people say, well, does it mean larger class sizes? It absolutely could. Does it mean loss of programming? Absolutely could. You know, those are going to be some of the tough decisions that people are going to have to make moving forward. We don't have a cut list, so to speak. We don't have a, okay, it's November 6th that this doesn't pass, here's a list of $5 million worth of cuts or things like that. We have started to kind of look at different things and ask department heads and principals to start to look at, if we needed you to reduce your budgets, what would that potentially look like, and start to brainstorm some of those ideas, but we haven't put a finite list in place.
But Plan B does not include incentivizing folks to have more kids, because that's like a five-year plan?
Yes. And, you know, I just, just to kind of put things in perspective, a lot of people said, this is all going to be fixed, and all these COVID babies are going to happen. I mean, there's no indication that we have scientific data, any research whatsoever, that there was a baby boom because of COVID. But the only data we have is there was actually an uptick in divorces, because I think people were around their spouses more. And so, but there is no data that we can find that shows that there's some big baby boom coming to our district, or any district for that matter, related to the pandemic and what happened, so.
All right. Any other questions on this? Otherwise, I guess we'll be talking about budget update soon after we talk about consent agenda, or vote on the consent agenda. It's just that we will be having a meeting, obviously, November 11th at our usual time of 6:00 PM, and at that time, we'll be announcing what direction we're going, depending on the results of the referendum. So with that, we'll turn to topics for discussion and possible action. Always first up is consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion for approval of expenditures.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob?
I move approval of the consent items, and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,282,840 and 86 cents.
Second?
All right, we have a motion of second. There is no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and it's passed. And some people ask, why don't you discuss the consent agenda? That's kind of the whole purpose of the consent agenda, this is stuff that we see every month. There are links for every board member to be able to, we do things like approved minutes, personnel changes, expenditures, this early college credit. So all of these things were part of the consent agenda, and anything can be pulled out, we've done that on occasion, to be able to discuss if discussion is necessary, so. But pretty much, it's the minutia of running the district without really making any big, broad policy changes. Next up is the 24-25 budget update, which we're into the 24-25 budget already, it just can't be formally approved and a mill rate set quite yet. We're on the eve of that, is that right, Bonnie?
We're getting close. So I did want to update, tomorrow's our big day, we get our equalization aid, so that will basically, it's the last piece of the pie. But we can update you on some things that we do know. We did get our finalized equalization. I'm on, is he knocking?
I did hear a knock.
I'm on, hello? Oh, maybe I'm not closing. So we do have our updated equalization properties, so we do get an estimate typically in August, we shared that with you. If you look, we do have some changes in some of our townships. So basically, in August, the Department of Revenue establishes the property value, it goes to the townships, and I believe they have a chance to debate whether or not it's right. We had two townships that there were changes, St. Joseph and Town of Troy, but we are still right around that 7%, what we estimated previously, so we're getting closer to getting you a mill rate. Our September enrollment FTE count, so we were in our projection model, we were estimating a negative 150 students. We actually ended up at a negative 126, 126, so that was good. And this is just kind of a breakdown, summer school, we were down a couple from last year, and then our September FTE comparison. So that next link, the updated bear forecast model, so what we did was took the model that we had shared with you previously, plugged in the negative 126 versus the 150, and just projected out where we would be. So not a dramatic change, but a little brighter future for us, by $300,000 when you get out to the 2029 school year.
Bonnie, can you explain why it's only 5,000 in year one and?
Sure, so it's only 5,000 because those students, it's a rolling three-year average, so we only count 1/3 of those students. And then we also get an offsetting declining enrollment, so now we're not declining as much, so then that comes up. And then we also get an offsetting declining enrollment, so now we're not declining as much, so then that comes off. So although we, we did lose that one twenty-six, it really only equates to about a five thousand dollar difference. It's a complicated formula, but it's offset by, because we have such a large declining enrollment exemption.
Any other questions? Basically, then we're at the next meeting, which is in two weeks. We will have the necessary data to be able to set the mill rate.
Correct. So if you go back to the, the letter, on the bottom, we will be presenting two operating budgets. One would be under the assumption that we presented at the annual meeting. That would be assuming that our refer, our referendum did not pass. And then the second one basically outlines that the referendum passes. So basically, if you look at the change, I highlighted those squares. So we would reduce our prepayment into our debt, which is in Fund Thirty, which is a little bit lower down. And then we would increase, increase the expenses in Fund Ten. So there's basically a five million dollar shift from our debt service up to our Fund Ten expenditures. Those numbers are going to change a little bit once we get our state equalization aid finalized. But you will be adapting two budgets, and then depending on how the, the referendum results are, would be the one that we would send to the taxing districts.
So you guys will be, you guys will be making a motion in October. It'll have, it'll be like a, kind of a two-part motion.
Correct.
It'll be, you know, you normally say, let it be resolved, that a tax of X number be, you know, on the district, of which such and such is for general operation, this much for debt service, this much for Fund Eighty. And then you'll say, and if the referendum does pass, it would be this instead. You know, so it's kind of one motion, but you make, you, you put it both in there, so you give yourself the opportunity so that if the referendum passes, it shifts. The overall dollar amount doesn't change. It's just the makeup of the levy. Does it go to debt service or does it go to operating?
All right. Any questions on that part? All right. So next up, the third Friday enrollment. Nick?
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is our third Friday count official this year. So this is, you know, essentially how we get paid. It generates our revenue. It's an important document for us that we end up filing with the state. So a couple of things to kind of draw your attention. You can see overall, including, including enrollment from January, it's about one hundred and forty-one student difference, and that includes our open enrollment out. If you look, a couple of things to draw, look at, our open enrollment out was up about eight kids. So where Tim's got his cursor there, that OE OD is open enrollment out. However, open enrollment in was up about twenty kids. So the spread got better for us. So the net got better. If you go down and you look at Trinity and St. Pat's and homeschool, you'll say, well, gosh, the homeschool numbers seem really off. Remember, this is from our third Friday count September. Homeschool count isn't required until what, what day?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And as of right now, we have a hundred and sixty-nine kids that are registered for homeschool. So that number should be about one sixty-nine instead of one twelve. It's actually down, as you can see. And you can see where the numbers are for the, for the private schools. So they do have a slight uptick in their enrollment. Some of that has to do with, if you look at St. Pat's, they had an eighth-grade class and only had seven kids in it. And they brought in a kindergarten class that has twenty-five. So that's a swing form. Where we measure kindergarten to senior year, they measure kindergarten eighth grade because, and the same thing happened with Trinity. They had a really odd class kind of going through with only eleven students in it. That, that went out in twenty-six. So you can see what their consistent class sizes are across the board and where they're at as we, as we go through. So any questions about third Friday count?
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan.
So the third Friday count, it's not that if the kid is absent because they're sick on the third Friday that we, they don't count for us. It's the number of students that are enrolled in our district.
Actively enrolled in the district. Yep.
Because I've heard people say, oh, if you, if you don't send your kid, they don't get counted.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we would not take the count if a child was homesick because they had sore throat. So, yeah. It used, I don't know if it used to be that way or they, how it used to go, but I mean, it's, Bonnie probably know more about it than anyone.
I think that's like an urban myth. I mean, you have to be there one day before and one day after. I mean.
The big thing they want to make sure is you don't have phantom students. So these, you know, for example, students that haven't shown up for three weeks into the school year, you're counting them. And then, oh, on the Monday after the third Friday count, you go ahead and exit them out of your system, so they're not counting against your enrollment. So they have to be a bona fide student. So.
Mr. President? So Nick, basically, the, the meat of the delta between where we were last year and this year. So if we look at January twelfth grade, that four hundred and thirteen, those are the kids we graduated essentially. And if we look at the September kindergarten, right at two eighty-nine, it's because the kindergarten class is that much smaller than the, than the class that we graduated. Is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you know, one of the things you can look at is the diagonal would be that your best measure of a cohort. So, so like where you see three twelve in K, that class is three oh eight in first grade this year. Or two ninety-six in first grade last year is actually three oh seven this year in second grade. And, and these are, these are resident students. So these, so you might say, well, I thought our kindergarten class was over two hundred. Well, it, it is over two hundred. And the reason it's over, or sorry, over three hundred is we do have open and all in. When we look at our butts and seeds count, which is, when we're looking at how big are the sections and all of those, those pieces. This number that you're seeing on this is just students that live within our district, are, are included, excluding any kids that are open and rolled out in these grades. So the open and rolled out are in their own column by themselves. And that's that, that column that says OE OD. So these would be our resident students by grade level that are going to school in our district when you look at the grade level pieces. So. So you can see, some, we've had some, you know, positive, some not as positive. It used to be, you know, ten years ago, twelve years ago, when you looked at a diagonal, every single grade level would be up. I mean, that's how we were growing because we had so much in migration. We were, we were bringing in kindergarten classes of three fifty, three seventy, but graduating classes of four fifty and still showing growth. And so we're just not, we're not seeing that. We don't see that as much. We used to always get about a fifty student bump at eighth to ninth grade. You can see this last year, the bump from eighth to ninth grade was twenty-four kids. So.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Are the virtual high school kids counted by grade here then?
As long as they are, yeah, as long as they are in our virtual program.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other questions regarding enrollment numbers? Otherwise, we get an update on this again in January, right?
Yep.
All right. Then last on our action agenda today is the twenty-four, twenty-five district goals.
So we have district goals. We took feedback. We got, I know there was some talk about should we go with three points versus two points increases on the student achievement. The one thing we don't have yet, we can't put on the sheet is the percentiles. That's something that'll be in the next month or so, when you said, Dave? About mid-November, we'll be able to get the percentiles on there. And why that becomes important is because sometimes people will look at that and go, oh, my gosh, sixty percent of kids proficient reading. That doesn't seem like it's very good. Forty percent of the kids can't read. Well, that's, that's not an accurate statement to say that forty percent of the kids can't read. And so when you start to look at that, I mean, last year, when we looked at our percentiles, we were in the top, what, eight percent, I think? We're in ninety-second percentile.
Yeah, overall, overall achievement above ninety.
Above ninety. And so as we continue to, as we continue to kind of look at, at some of these different things. So, you know, these would be the same goals that you saw in, at the work session in September.
Okay. And I think there was some request for, to get the percentiles, but we weren't sure when that was going to be. Now we know it's going to be mid-November. So we could either do a motion tonight on these goals, or we could, you know, postpone it until we have those percentiles. So. Okay. Is there a second?
Second?
All right, we have a motion of second. All those in favor of tabling this to a November meeting, once we have the percentiles, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. So the only thing that got passed tonight was the consent agenda. So.
These are like Congress.
Yeah. Well, I will now entertain a motion regarding agenda item six, which is going into closed session.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent F, to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons. Preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, which if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations.
Second?
All right. We have a motion by Lynn, second by Bob. Roll call, vote. Bauman? Brown? Powers?
Aye.
Robson?
Aye.
Rosowski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will brief recess to allow them to take down the cameras and take out the microphones so we can be in closed session. Thank you.